Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Julie O'Brien, Executive Administrator.
Yes.
Martha Taylor, Planning Director.
Yes.
Doug Janvren, Fire Chief.
Yes.
Town Council, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Talaman, Mead Talaman and Costa LLC. I believe we'll have Jay later. Anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Matt Porter, Vieira, DG and Filippo Attorneys at Law.
Yes, here.
Vincent Golden, The Sunset Club.
He's just joining now.
Okay. Beau Sturm, The Sunset Club.
Here.
I see Beau. Yeah, we have you. Josh Childs, The Sunset Club.
Here.
Good evening. This April 29th, 2021, open meeting of the Newbury Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with Agenda Materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Select Board is convening by video Zoom conference. And as such, it's posted on the Select Board's Agenda, which you can find on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and enter Meeting ID 833-8003-5023, or by calling 1-929-205-6099 and entering the Meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak. If needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you've been called. Before we turn to the first item on the Agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Highest Chair will introduce each speaker on the Agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer or your phone when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds, earphones with tablets, or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during the public hearings tonight. In addition, there will be an opportunity for public comment during oral communications from citizens following the public hearing. During the public hearing, after board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom Raise Hand function. To raise your hand, hover your cursor over the bottom of the Zoom window, below the photo gallery, and click on the yellow hand that appears. If you don't see a yellow hand, click on the Participants button. A list of participants will open and display on the right. At the bottom of this participant area, you will see an option to click on a Raise Hand button. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the More function next to your name. To raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad, if you're on a cellphone. I will then allow questions and comments for members of the public who have raised their hands, in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the Raise Hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant, his or her representative, the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the Raise Hand column and again afford the participant, applicant, representative, an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant, applicant, representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Okay, tonight, we have a public hearing continuance for the liquor license for The Sunset Club, 2 and 8 Vieira Old Point Road, Newbury. I would entertain a motion to open the continuance.
Move to open, and I would like to read this notice of the public hearing. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Select Board will hold an online virtual public hearing via Zoom to consider the application submitted by Sunset Club LLC for Old Point Road, Newbury, Mass., 01951, for a new all-alcoholic beverages, Section 12, on-premise restaurant license. Said license to be exercised at Sunset Club, a restaurant comprised of 1,600 square feet of indoor space and 16,686 square feet of outdoor space located at 4 Old Point Road, Newbury, Mass. All persons interested or wishing to be heard are invited to participate in the meeting remotely from their computer, tablet, or smartphone Meeting ID is 827-3801-0812. Passcode is 294498. Or by telephone by calling 1-929-205-6099 US and using Meeting ID 827-3801-0812. Or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel nine or at www.tncTV.org. Submitted by J.R. Colby, the Chair of the Select Board. And it was submitted to the Newbury Report Daily News, published once, Monday, March 29th, charged by the Select Board. And I move to open?
Second. Okay, roll.
I got a message that you can't be heard.
Pull that closer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, I will move to a roll call vote. Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
And J.R. Colby? Yes. Hi, guys. Do you have any new information or revisions to plans that you would like to share with us tonight?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chair. Matt Porter for Sunset Club. There are no revisions to the plan. I don't believe our clients have anything to add at this point, but we're certainly here to answer any follow-up questions that the board may have.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from the Select Board so far?
Martha, have anything that she'd like to tell us about site plan review or anything? Is there anything that we might have missed, Martha?
We all need to speak up.
Yep. Is there anything we might have missed when we looked at site plan review? Everything okay? Were there any, you know, things we need to know from the meeting Wednesday?
Well, the planning board voted last night to approve, to grant site plan approval to the project, based on the revised drawings that had been submitted previously. So everything is in order with that. If you have any specific questions, I can try to answer them.
No, I'm good.
Actually, I do. Is the fencing, what is the fencing like, Martha?
So the fencing around the perimeter on the Old Point roadside and the Plum Island Boulevard side, there's an eight-to-12-inch curve with sand on top of it, and then a three-inch, I'm sorry, 36-inch-foot-tall snow fence on top of that. And then on the other side, there's a six-foot fence between the parking area and the cloud, and going around the north side. So there's fencing essentially all the way around, except for the two driveway access and egress points.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Mike?
I haven't had a chance. An app site called WhatsApp, Next Door Neighbor. And there's been a lot of chatter today, and I haven't. The only reason I know this chatter, I get things sent from my phone. This is the topic. I was, I just haven't had a chance to read it yet, but there is some concerns. I'm not sure if the people are going to talk tonight. I just want to bring that to the board's attention. Some things about a fence taken out part of a yard. I don't, I, that's, I just heard bits and pieces.
So is that pertaining to the liquor license?
Yes, well, it's changed to the.
Site plan review?
Site plan review. So it doesn't, all right, so it doesn't.
No, I just don't, I'm asking, it's a question.
I would think it would.
It pertains to the liquor license.
Yeah. I would, I would think so.
Jerry? Are they, are they saying that it's the temporary fence? Because they've got a temporary plastic fencing to, because they're clearing the property, getting rid of all the debris when they pull down the buildings?
I haven't had a chance to read it.
Okay.
Hopefully, the people that.
As I understand, the snow fence that's proposed are like the red wooden stakes, like the rolls you see on the beach.
Right, right.
Chair, when do we ask for some public comment?
That's coming up next.
Good, so then we'll see if we hear anyone.
And we need to read something into the record, right? Is that after public comment? I'm not sure.
After. Okay. Any other comments, questions from the board? All right, we'll move to public comment. Do we have raised hands?
I don't see any.
Steve, Steve Manchin has raised his hand.
Oh, sorry, it's Steve.
Steve, how are you tonight?
You gotta unmute yourself.
Right, that was my moving around the screen. I think I'm unmuted now. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. And first, let me ask a bit of a question. My understanding that the Select Board tonight is considering both the alcohol license and the, I think it's called Victual, that Victual license, that is operating as a restaurant? Is that correct? Or am I, should I just focus on the alcohol?
Tonight is a focus on the alcohol.
Thank you. Well, let me start off then by saying, first, I want to note that the restaurant is located in a residential area. And we need to keep that in mind. Certainly, other establishments could come along that may want to, you know, get an alcohol license in a residential area. I could think of a golf center wanting to convert to a bar with outdoor seating. Maybe the Yellow School for the Performing Arts would want to do the same thing. Or heaven forbid, Tender Croft would like to no longer be a farm area and would like to build a similar restaurant and outdoor alcohol seating place. So the kinds of things we're talking about have implications for other parts of town. But the one before us, of course, is regarding Plum Island, again, which is a residential area. The fact that this is going to be a restaurant is something that's already been decided by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I'm not contesting that it's going to be a restaurant. In fact, I can support that it'd be a restaurant. But my issue are the hours of operation and the management of the operation for serving of alcohol. Approximately 140, 145 seats are going to be available in the outdoors where alcohol can be consumed. And I would submit that that is likely to lead to, you know, significant noise emanating from the facility, particularly in conjunction with outdoor music, which may be from downward-directed speakers, but nonetheless be another source of sounds in the neighborhood. In addition, if there is outdoor music from bands, that could be another source of music. Again, these are all considerations about being located in a residential area. So too, there's a playground was proposed for the area too, which again is fine. But the applicant is proposing to have Last Call for the hypothetical liquor license be at 10:30 at night, with the facility as a whole closing at 11:00. I would suggest that that's too late. I don't contest having alcohol and business being conducted in the inside portion of the operation, which is around 25 to 30 seats, as I recall. Don't hold me to the exact number. But the point is that indoor seating is much different than outdoor seating in terms of the sound and nature of the residential neighborhood in which the facility is located. So I'm really concerned about noise and sound after hours. A suggestion I would offer up is that instead of having Last Call at 10:30, we think about tying it to sunset. You know, for different reasons, you know, the golf center has some of its operations curtailed in a timeframe that relates to sunset. And I would suggest that that may be a reasonable thing to do, to tie the limitation on outdoor alcohol serving till sometime associated with sunset. I personally might have a preference that outdoor seating for the food part of the operation also terminate at some time that wraps around sunset, maybe 30 minutes after sunset or whatever. But I really cannot support having outdoor alcohol consumption till 11 o'clock with serving stopping at 10:30. And I suggest it'd be more appropriate, given that this is a residential area, where people are going to be affected by the sound, to have something less than what the applicant has proposed. And with that, I'll go back to mute.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Do we have any other raised hands tonight?
Yes, Leslie Matthews.
Okay. Leslie, how are you tonight?
Hi, Leslie Matthews, 111 Main Street. As far, when, when you give hours of operation to any kind of hospitality institution, that it should both serving, if they are given a liquor license, and serving of food should coincide with one and all. If you issue a license and you have stipulations on what your noise barriers are or your light barriers are, it is up to the town and the A, B, C, C to impose violations, fines, and take the licensed facility away for a period of time. Give them a chance, is what I say. If you say, take away their ability to serve alcoholic beverages at 8:30 at night, because that's when sunset is, and they have the ability to stay, have their kitchen open till 10:30, they are going to basically lose a huge bulk of their customer base in those two hours, because people want to go out, have a glass of wine, maybe a beer, maybe neither one of those. But to be able to have that ability to do so is part of what the industry is all about. Now, if you go across the street to the Plum Island Grill, they have an outdoor facility. I believe during COVID, when they were allowed to reopen again outdoors, they were given a nine o'clock curfew, and that was mandated by the state of Massachusetts. And so was that as far as the Beach Coma. I think it's that what I've read and seen about the responsibility, attitude of these applicants, that they will maintain what they have promised to the neighborhoods. It is a commercial zone. And I understand it's a residential zone. But when you live in a residential zone with commercial ability as well, you have to understand that commercial also has the same rights as residential, as far as being able to run their business. Thank you.
Do we have any other raised hands?
I do not see any. Do you, Martha? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Jan. You can unmute yourself, Jan.
I just had to figure out where I was going.
We have you now.
Lucky you. I just have a quick question. I remember a couple of years back, there was a lot of controversy with the coma having music and its effect, how loud it could be, and when there was the windows were open and things like that. So I wasn't sure if that was a stipulation specifically for them or if it's a specific, a specification from the town.
Was this on the Beach Coma decision?
Right, about having music, especially live music. And I don't believe that, I heard last night that they were having live music at the new facility. But I'm just, it just occurred to me that I wondered where that, what the concept with that was. Are they restricted to one thing and is it the same all the way across?
I believe music is an entertainment license, is separate from liquor.
And who processes that?
I believe the Select Board does.
Yes, it goes through the Select Board, but it is separate than the liquor license. It would be an entertainment license. Right, okay, so that's not, that has nothing to do with tonight? It's just strictly liquor license?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, guys.
All right, have a good night, Jan.
Jan, thanks.
You too.
Okay. Do we have any other raised hands?
Yes, we have Steve and Matt Porter.
Steve?
Hi, if I may respond to something that was said by the, by Leslie Matthews. Again, and I should have identified that this is Steve Manchin on 14th Street. There's no doubt that the facility is a commercially zoned place and the ship has sailed about it being a restaurant. However, the ship has not at all sailed about it having an alcohol license. And having a restaurant does not mean you get to have an alcohol license. I can think of the successful operation of Bob Lobster, which was successful for many years, without an alcohol license. So I don't see having an alcohol license as something that's critical to the restaurant. But on the other hand, I'm not saying it can't have one. I'm really suggesting, maybe not so merely suggesting, that the hours of operation for outdoor alcohol need to be considered and perhaps cut back from 10:30 with a closure at 11:00. You know, certainly the sound travels. When the Beach Coma had music on Saturday, you could hear it where I live. I'm not saying it was a problem, it was also early in the day. I believe other people have noted how sound can travel, say from the Newbury Court, brewing areas, you know, across the Upper Parker River, not Parker River, but, let me take the name back, it doesn't come to mind. I mean, the noise factor is a factor. And I think that needs to go into consideration about the kind of alcohol license that the Select Board decides to give. Because again, one doesn't get an alcohol license automatically just because one has a restaurant. I think you need to reconsider about the site-specific nature of the facility, which is in a residential, abuts residential areas where the sound will travel, when you could have 140-plus people sitting outside and drinking late into the night. I think it is going to be a detriment to the neighborhood and that some more reasonable time service should stop. Again, on the outside, the inside can keep on going till closure, in my opinion. But not necessarily for outside. So thank you again.
Thank you, Steve. Before I, Matt Porter had his hand up. Before I have you again, Matt. One of my questions from our last meeting was, you know, you stated that the Mass. state liquor license laws allow establishments to stay open till 11:00. And our council affirmed your statement, you were correct about that, so.
It's actually, if you read this, and it makes it kind of, you know, plain. The applicant's attorney is correct. The ABC licenses cannot be barred from serving alcohol from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Correct.
That's pretty, pretty plain.
Right, so I just, I wanted to get that out there. As far as having a liquor license goes, it seems that they are able to stay open till 11:00 under Mass. state law if they possess a liquor license. Am I, is that?
That's my understanding.
Your opinion that I'm reading that correctly?
Is our attorney on?
Yes, he's here.
Then, you know, they can clear that up for us too. But that's what we have from Lisa in front of us now.
Right, so the liquor license and their proposed hours, I mean, they seem to coincide. So do you, do you want to add anything to the comments, Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, nothing to add to that. I just wanted to clarify that we will be filing an entertainment license before the board, but that's not with you tonight. I know there was a couple of questions on the music. We're still conferring on entertainment maybe, but certainly the board might to either approve those plans or disprove them tonight. It's just the liquor license, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for being forthcoming about that.
Mr. Chair, Attorney Talaman is here, if you'd like to have him clarify any of this.
Mr. Talaman, the way the board is interpreting Mass. law that possessing a liquor license allows them to stay open until 11:00, are we interpreting this correctly, in your opinion?
You absolutely are. Whether or not there could be a condition with respect to just outside service as opposed to inside service, provided that there is still a robust opportunity for inside service, would be subject to whatever evidence and findings you have. As, as we go upon, you can have reasonable conditions. You can't prohibit all service before 11:00. But there are reasonable conditions you can impose if the evidence supported it with respect to outside service or noise or anything else like that.
Jerry?
I have a question for Attorney Talaman. Under the equal protection of the law, you cannot treat differently businesses or individuals who are similarly situated differently. So doesn't that require us to treat this new business the same as we have treated the Plum Island Grill or the Neighbors or the Beach Coma? I mean, we cannot make special conditions for this particular party?
Well, so yes and no. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to get overly legalistic here, but.
But it's outside as opposed to inside, yeah.
So you're not, you're not required. Let's say you made a mistake in the past. And I don't know anything about those other licenses, per se. But that you don't, if those aren't working out to your satisfaction, you're not condemned to repeat that. Now, if every single place in town had outside service, and there are no issues with outside service till 1:00 in the morning, and you impose a restriction against outside service here, and there were no other mitigating factors, like the proximity of the school or some other activity that would be sensitive to that kind of late-night thing, then yeah, that, that would be viewed as arbitrary and capricious, just kind of picking it out of thin air. If there is a demonstrable concern, however, then notwithstanding those other licenses, that there's been umpteen noise complaints, that this site is different because it's in close proximity to a more thickly settled housing, or other thing that justify a limitation on the outside service here, then you might have some leeway. You don't have to repeat necessarily. So yes, it does, the prior decisions do form the basis of what the town has considered to be reasonable in the past. Past, but every single situation is different. And if you feel, and I don't know what all the evidence is here, I'm hearing some of it from some of the members of the public, if you feel that there's an overriding condition that needs to be imposed on this because of some uniqueness or because of the change of times or a different traffic pattern or what have you, then you have some reasons to do it. But it's going to be closely scrutinized, no matter what you do. So liquor licenses are not like zoning special permits. There is a little less leeway to impose conditions. You really have to support them with facts that support the reason for you cutting back on the request.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Talaman. Any other questions from the board?
I, I just. I, I just want to respond to Mr. Mannion regarding liquor licenses. I realize that, yes, you can have a restaurant without a liquor license, however, that's where the, the restaurant makes all its profit from their liquor license. So to deny or to limit a liquor license, you're limiting the owners' ability to make, make a living, and I think five out of every restaurant goes out of business within the first one or two years. Also, the residential area, I think people should realize, as the board does from having gone out on our walk site, that these two applicants, they own the immediate, I think, a dozen buildings that are around the, this acre of land that the restaurant will be on. So I'm sure they're wise enough to have tenants who perhaps are hard of hearing or, or, you know, are not going to complain because, or, or they give them a, a break on their rent or something like that. So I, I think, you know, to, I, I know it is residential and I know sound does carry, but, but they own the immediate dozen cottages surrounding them. I think that should be, that should be noted.
Okay, we'll move on.
But Steve Manchin has his hand up again.
Yes, and please, please make it, uh, make it concise, Steve. All right.
Yes, thank you. And I think those are some valid points raised by the select woman, but again, if I understood Attorney Tullman correctly, there can be some unique considerations. And I would submit that 145 people or thereabouts drinking outside is definitely unique. The Plum Island Grill has a small veranda where people have been known to crowd and look at the sunset while drinking. They have a tented area behind the building where I believe they can do some outside serving for how many people, I don't know. The Chief Javron may know about that. And certainly the Beach Comer has much more limited outside seating as well. So I would say that if one was looking for a reason for a specific condition, which says sunset, to tie the length of the outdoor serving to, if one does exist, which could be used. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. If we have no more raised hands, I will close public comment now. Seeing none.
Any more raised hands?
Okay. Do you have anything else to add? Matt?
Uh, I do not, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I will move on now. Are there any conditions the board wants to discuss imposing on the approval?
Do we want to note for the record the receipt of the letter?
Sure.
So I just want to note for the record that we did receive an email from Steve Manchin dated Monday, April 26th. And we've all received a copy of it, and it's going to be submitted as part of the record. Okay, that's all.
Okay. Are there any conditions the Select Board would like to impose on the approval?
I'm, I'm all set.
I know at the last meeting, you mentioned maybe going back and a possible review in a year if there were problems. Do you still feel like that would be a wise idea?
Yes, but, but that's in the, sorry, that's in the, the natural course of.
In the event of there's issues.
The yearly review where they, they have to come before us every year. So I, I would not impose that as a condition, because we don't, we don't impose that on the other people that we give licenses to. And I, I do think we need to treat them in the same manner that we, we treat the Plum Island Grill, which is across the street and is their, their competition. It's unfair to, to limit and not do the same as we do for Plum Island Grill because it's a, it'll affect their bottom line. And I think we need to have businesses succeed in Newbury.
Any other comments on conditions the board would like to impose or not?
Being in full agreement with not wanting to make it adjuvant for business to exist, I do know that the island kind of during the week gets very quiet, almost from nine o'clock to 10 o'clock on because, you know, especially when people were really going to work, they need to go to work. So I would suggest that no one else has maybe thought of an alternative, and that might be to have the weekend hours maybe go to the extent of the liquor license. And this would be outside because inside they would sustain 11:00 to 11:00. And maybe have sun reduction during the week to like 10 o'clock or something outside. It just seems, it seems long just to me, and I'm, I'm fine with whatever the board wants because I'm in full support of business and I want them to try, but it seems a long time to go 11:00, 11:00 outside, you know, but it is what it is.
I, I agree, I'm a little, I'm a little hung up on the weeknights and I, I want them to succeed. I think it's a, it's a cool concept and I think it'll be a positive for the town. And, you know, they, they need to be profitable to justify doing it. The weeknights do concern me. I mean, I would support maybe a Monday through Thursday, 10 o'clock shut off, then, you know, Friday, Saturday and Sunday they can do their thing.
The other thing is, like Jerry had mentioned, we can certainly let them have the 11:00 to 11:00 and not try to condition anything and see what happens, because we certainly have review over it next year. My concern, real quickly, is are we doing it to all the restaurants in town then? None of, the other ones, Michael. Well, the Beach Comer is outside, you know? They, they just really don't have the extent of 45, 145 seats outside.
What makes it different is it's a lot of people outside.
But, but you know, because of Co- because of COVID, I mean, this is really, you know, is, is really good because people are afraid to go to restaurants. So to have one outside, I think that is, that is a very healthy thing and it will return our town to normalcy sooner than later.
To be honest, I would vote both ways. This was a suggestion for you, so.
So I had concerns in the beginning about keeping the alcohol on premise and I had wanted to have, I was to ensure that there was fencing around the whole building. And I had did, I did also mention having the alcohol be kept indoors only and not have bars outside, outside seating. But I didn't realize how big the number of seats were going to be outside and that might actually make it difficult for them to serve their patrons timely and have too many people running in and out. So I think, I, I would just like to ensure that the alcohol every night is pulled into the building and locked up at night and nothing is left outside. That might be good practice anyways, I don't know, but I think, I think as the Liquor License Authority, I think one of our concerns is to make sure that the alcohol does stay on premise and that, and that we set the business up for success. As far as limiting outdoor dining, um, not outdoor dining, limiting outdoor serving alcohol hours, I think that, I think that if there's a problem with it, I think we can revisit it. But I think that, I think that, I think that it's good management on their own part. If, if they're not having, if they have no patrons in the building on a Monday night at, you know, they're going to close at whatever time, 10 o'clock or whatever, anyways. So, I don't know. I just, I think, I think between the fence and as long as we condition that the alcohol remains inside locked up is one of the conditions that I would like to put in. I don't know if Mr. Tullman can, is that a condition that is a reasonable condition, that no alcohol is left outside?
I'm sorry, what was, no alcohol what?
Left outside, the alcohol has to be brought indoors and locked up each evening?
Yeah, I, I think that, that's entirely reasonable.
Okay.
We have to put it in there, though. There is a raised hand.
Uh, Mr. Porter?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, on that item, all alcohol will be, when the restaurant is not open, if stored inside in a secure location. So we're fine, if the board would like to make that a, a restriction or a condition on the license, that's fine, but it certainly will be on our part just as far as best practices are concerned.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, um, when we went on our site walk, we were shown the, the house, the building that's going to stay.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe Mr. Porter or the other fellow said that the alcohol would be locked upstairs in the second floor.
Okay, each evening?
Hmm.
Yeah, I mean, why wouldn't you? I mean, that's, that's their profit center.
I know, it's a lot of money, but you know, if you leave it outside, it's easier to open the next day if it's outside and kids come and.
I don't think that's going to happen.
Blah, blah, blah.
Okay, before we move on, I would entertain any motions for any conditions the board wants to place on this project? Seeing none? Without, without taking an official vote, is the feeling of the board at this time that they can vote on this project?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You've received all the information you need and.
Comfortable.
Uh, Mr. Porter, do you have, do you anticipate any further materials or information being submitted to the board?
Uh, I do not. The, the application with the board is the same application that if the board approves it tonight, will, will now go up to the ABCC. So it, it cannot be changed and it will not be. The only matters that may come, or will come back for the board will just be in entertainment. But as far as the liquor license is concerned, what is there is, is complete and, and will remain complete.
Okay. It appears we've reached consensus. I would entertain a motion to vote on the approval of the new liquor license application.
Motion to vote?
Second.
Yep, second.
Roll call vote, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes.
Can I move to close the public hearing?
Yes.
I move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. All right. Have a good night, guys.
Can I move to vote, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, move to vote on the liquor license.
Didn't we just do that?
We just did it.
I think we cut.
We just did it.
Just did.
We voted before we closed the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Tullman, did you see that?
So we'll do it both ways.
All right, do it again, do it again.
Do it again.
No, this was done correctly as far as.
Okay.
Okay, good.
The order that's been laid out, so I don't think we reinvent the wheel.
Okay.
Ask, are we good?
We're good.
We're good.
Yeah, all right. Have a good night.
Thank you, good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, I am gonna bounce around just a little bit, so everyone bear with me. Tonight we have on the new business, a request for right of entry to take care of a tree problem. Fire Chief Janren, would you like to just give us a, a, a short and concise description of the situation?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. There's a tree that fell on the property adjacent to the, the Town Hall of 25 High Road. It's on the neighbor's property, it's a very large tree, her property fell and damaged her deck. What she's afraid of and what I'm afraid of is that if, if the rest of it falls the other way, which it would fall our way, that's our egress for our secondary ambulance, which we use quite frequently. So she's trying to give permission for the tree company to park, in the parking lot to remove the tree, because it's easier access for them. I'm, I'm just afraid that if we let it go, you know, they said it's up to four weeks to get anybody in to do it now. So I'm a little afraid if we let it go and it, it's a very, very large tree, it would take a lot of time to clean it up if it fell, and that is not our access for our ambulance. So they're looking at something in writing that they can use the parking lot of the old Town Hall, of the Town Hall of 25 High Road, to put their tree trucks in and to cut the tree up and remove it.
Chief, are we covered for, are we, are we covered for the town to allow them to be on the property, cut the trees insurance-wise?
The motion tonight will make that all.
All right, then, good.
Jerry?
Yeah. Chief, I was down there this afternoon looking at the tree and you're right, it's gigantic. Did last week's rain cause, cause that problem?
I don't know, it was very, very windy all week and rain a lot, so I assume it probably did, I guess.
The wind in that area is tremendous.
Okay, yeah.
It's fifty, fifty mile an hour.
It's always, always windy there, it's always windy.
The other thing, I, I'm, I'm sure the, the company from Palmer that's going to cut it down, um, do you, do you know why they went to someone so far away in Palmer? Was that because they were the only people who would, who would do it in a tiny area?
I don't have, no, I didn't ask, I, um.
Okay, I just, long way to go.
Yeah, they're four weeks out, I believe, anyways, I don't know, maybe she, that was the best she could do, I, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Tonight, do you guys, do you have the motion in front of you?
No.
All right, well, I'll make the motion tonight. I move to authorize the Chair to execute a right of entry, including a hold and harmless and indemnification provision to allow Northern Tree Service LLC, 1290 Park Street, Palmer Mass., to enter upon the Old Town Hall property for the purpose of removing and/or trimming trees on an adjacent piece of property and is drafted and approved by Town Council.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. Thanks, Chief Janren, have a good night.
Thank you very much, you as well.
Okay, under old business, we have the 243 Newbury Port Turnpike Bed and Breakfast, reviewing consideration of the special permit decision. Final vote may be taken tonight. Okay, the, the Select Board hereby decides that the affixed property is proper parcel for a bed and breakfast establishment under section 97 dash five dot B of the Newbury zoning bylaws and that it meets all requisite criteria. It's therefore decided to grant a special permit for a bed and breakfast establishment in accordance with the terms and conditions stated below. Notwithstanding any future agreement to the Newbury zoning bylaw, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, or any other legislative act. The maximum number of bed and breakfast guest rooms shall be four. There shall be no cooking facilities in the bedrooms, including the two-room suite. The applicant shall continue to reside in the residence. The special permit shall extend to the applicants only and shall expire in the event the applicants are no longer the owners of the property. Further, the bed and breakfast special permit shall be renewed annually as required by section 97 dash five dot B dot one. The existing three-bedroom guest house on the property shall not be used at any time as part of the bed and breakfast establishment. No certificate of occupancy shall be granted by the building commissioner without first obtaining Board of Health approval for a sewage system on the lot and fire department approval of the fire egress requirements. Issuance by the Select Board of the special permit shall not be treated as nor deemed to be approval by the Board of Health for a permit for the construction and use on any lot of any individual sewage system. A duly authorized agent of the town shall have the right to enter upon the property to ensure continued compliance with the terms and conditions of the special permit. The applicant shall file this decision with the Essex County Registry of Deeds or Land Court, if registered land, and a copy of the decision stamped with recording information, book, book and page, or land court document number shall be included with the applicant for any related building permits. This permit is valid for two years from the date of approval. The approval shall no longer be valid if a substantial use has not commenced, except for a good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not commenced, except for good cause, within this period. Excluded from any lapse period is the time required to pursue or await the determination of any appeal taken pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17. I would entertain a motion to approve 243 Newbury Port Turnpike Bed and Breakfast.
Motion to approve 243 Newbury Port Turnpike Bed and Breakfast.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes.
Well, I wish both the new businesses in town the best of luck.
Yes.
Absolutely. Let's just see businesses.
Okay, speedy end of COVID.
So, um.
I'll second that.
So I signed the VW 21 dash 23 for Staples. Let's move to communications from citizens. Give that a couple seconds, see if we have any raised hands. Do we have any citizen raised hands?
Do not see any raised hands.
Okay. Seeing none? We have some correspondence, we have letters from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We have some correspondence, we have letters from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries from April 16th and April 17th, 2021, regarding clam flat closures. We have an email from Steve Manchin regarding the new restaurant on Plum Island. Does anyone have any meeting updates?
I attended the Fiscal Policy Committee meeting, and this is budget season, they discussed budget, they're going to try to fully fund regional transportation again, and some talk of a CP bolstering the CPA tax to try to have monies coming in for affordable housing, so that's something that we may want to look into. Again, once again, I think the town's voted twice against the CPA tax, but this might be another opportunity that we can look into, and that's really it.
I prophesize that we'll have another closure of the clam flats tonight.
Little bit of rain there, boy.
Pretty safe bed, I'd say.
We need it desperately, though, but.
Okay. We have meeting minutes to approve March 30th and April 13th, 2021.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm going to abstain, abstain from voting on the March 30th, because I was not present due to a death in my family.
Okay.
Do we want to take them separately, then?
Sure. Okay, so you're going to recuse from the 30th?
Yeah, I should.
Okay, it's, they're minutes.
You can slide down.
Um.
Yeah, I'm not recusing, yeah, I'm just staying here.
Is there a motion to re, to approve the March 30th, 2021, select board draft minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion, roll call vote, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
JR Colby?
Yes.
Now, we have April 13th, 2021, select board draft meeting minutes. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
JR Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Okay, do we?
I move we move to.
Yes.
Okay, move to sign warrants?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
And JR Colby?
Yes.
And we have executive session tonight, so we will not be reconvening at the end of executive session. Do you have a notice to read, Alicia?
So, I move pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy regarding litigation to Wett L. Prime Energy Consultant, Inc. versus Town of Newbury Planning Board at Dell Land Court, 21 Mis, MISC 00209, concerning property at 23 Central Street, and subject to the chairperson's declaration that holding a discussion on this matter in open session would be detrimental to the public interest and would have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position. So, I move we go into executive session.
Second.
I believe we need a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
And JR Colby?
Yes.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.